Everyone, and thank everybody for being here and being patient. The time is now 5:31. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It has been properly posted as required by state law, and we do have a quorum. And we will start with the invocation. Ask Commissioner Lopez to lead us on the invocation.
Dear God, we know that you can open doors that no person can ever shut. It's not always easy for us to see and sense the direction we need to take. And so today, we trust and ask you to lead us to open doors of opportunity that you have prepared for us. Help us make sense of the options that lay before us and help us see and make the right choices today. Amen.
All right, and I will ask our city attorney to read the conflict of interest, please.
Yes, Mayor. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain member of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion or vote on any agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
None.
Nope.
None.
None.
Okay, and moving on to citizen communication. Amanda, do we have anyone signed up today?
Yes, Mayor, we have six persons that signed up.
Okay.
And the first one is Pastor Luis Cabrera, and the address is 205 South Gate Drive, Harlingen, Texas. I think he would like to be called, so let me go ahead and give him a call.
And what is the topic next?
He wants to talk about new business number seven on the agenda.
And does he want to speak?
He only responded that he would like to be called.
Okay.
So... But I don't think he's going to respond.
Hello?
Hello, Pastor Cabrera. This is Amanda Lison, the City Secretary of the City in Harlingen.
Yeah, I am like two minutes away, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. We'll wait.
If you give me a moment to speak, please.
Yes, thank you, sir. We'll wait for you.
Thank you. Okay.
We have Raymond Reyes, 706 Tucker Drive, and Continue Progress.
Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive. Always talking about the good things going on here in Harlingen. But of course, with the good, there's always the bad as well. That's inescapable. That's just the way it is in life. So one thing I did notice when I was driving around my property on Jackson Street, we had a small little rainfall. And, well, lo and behold, G and Van Buren got flooded like big time. I was in one of my SUVs, so it wasn't really a problem. But other cars didn't fare so well. So obviously, it's still an ongoing issue where the drainage was modified and done on my property. And on the other side at Luna, there's a whole bunch of trash that's going into those new inlets and stuff. I took some photos, so I need to send them off so you guys know exactly what I'm talking about. I'm surprised there's no type of screens to keep that from happening. But again, that's going to be a problem. That was an initial problem to begin with when the palm trees and all kinds of debris would go in there. Continues also, I mentioned it last time at the meeting, being an issue with now there's even more trash. Now I have some couches in the alley in the back of my property. So, you know, one of my employees saw a truck, literally, in the evening because the spot's open until 2 o'clock in the morning. Them actually dumping stuff there and rolling out. So I guess now the word's out that that, you know, can be done. So I just have some other people haul that off at my expense, which I guess in the end I can just write it off, you know. It's a business, so what can we do? But if I'm paying taxes, it needs to be addressed because now people have gotten comfortably doing that. And we haven't had that problem before, being that we've been there since 1976. Other issues that I would suggest as you guys overseeing being elected officials is go to some of these board meetings and attend the discussions to see what's actually being discussed. Because at my meeting yesterday, apparently there are some limitations on what we can discuss, but there's no real forum to put certain things of what other board members want to bring up, which kind of limits it. And then it comes out, well, you got to do a workshop. You got to do this. You got to do that. Well, you've already gone through three or four cycles, which if you meet once a month, that's not good. You know, that would never be adequate in a business at any level, whether it's a small business or a corporate business. I deal with that stuff on a daily basis. So I think there's some modifications that can be done in accordance to whatever the state guidelines are and stuff. My staff, just like the city has staff, are already looking into that, being that I'm on that board. We just want to make sure that we're always moving in the right direction, not delaying things that already are going to take time anyway. And again, I'd just like to see good things happen. Been here for a long time, and now I have five grandkids. Sometimes feel I'm being drawn back in because I always speak up, no matter where I'm at, whether I'm... Whatever part of the country. I always say it like it is. Like I said, I'm not Willy Wonka. I don't sugarcoat anything. I just say it like it is. So thank you very much for your time. Y'all have a good evening. I got other things to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
The next one there is Audrey Kupula. And she, 24... 27, 485 Sandero Drive, San Benito. And she would like to be called.
She's here.
I think she's here.
Oh, she's here.
I'm right here. Hi. Good evening. Yes, as she said, my name is Audrey Kupula, and I'm a local Realtor here in Harlingen. Been in real estate here for almost a decade. Born and raised here in Harlingen. And the reason I wanted to come up and speak today is on behalf of the item that's on the docket today regarding the purchase of tractable land, a six-acre tractable land on Loop 499 by Black Mountain Energy. And I know that Dan Ditto will be here in a little while, but I just wanted to come forward today just to... On our real estate side of things, I mean, I know there's been a lot of back and forth on this issue, but this property has been on the market for 18 years. And so this is a fantastic opportunity, in our professional opinion, for this tractable land to be sold to this entity and for that special use permit to be granted. And so I just want to encourage y'all to highly consider granting this special use permit. Given that, you know, if this does not go through, I think this piece of property would sit on the market for quite a long time. And so I think it's very beneficial for the city. I mean, it will create, right now it's agriculturally zoned, so it's not generating a whole lot of revenue for the city. And so having this special use permit, having this entity come in from a, you know, real estate side of things would be awesome just for growth for the city, for, you know, tax purposes. And so I just wanted to come in and discuss that.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
The next one is Mike Gonzalez, 1632 Sam Houston Drive, and would like to speak on Agenda Item Number Eight.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Mike Gonzalez, and I'm here in support of the item on the Agenda Eight. I'd like to thank everyone here present. And, you know, Harlingen is an expanding city. It's growing, and it's going to continue to grow. The city of Harlingen itself, inside of the city limits, is up to capacity. There is zero capacity left now. The item on number eight will expand it to the north. And I appreciate y'all's support and appreciate your time. And I'd like to take this time to congratulate the Harlingen South Girls Soccer Club. Being a graduate of Harlingen High School, that's, you know, I appreciate you all, everything that y'all do. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
The next one is J.D. Reneger, 2601 Wilson Road. Filling the lake.
It's veneer. I'm here on behalf of probably 86 residents who live at 2601 Wilson Road. But everybody has, starting from 1 to 86, is how the houses are numbered in there. And when they were building the expressway, they dug a big lake there. And we would like help filling that lake. It's been dry for quite some time, but it's moist. There's a lot of critters coming around. There's dead turtles and dead fish in there. It's kind of a health concern. I was a school nurse here in Harlingen for 13 years, and I tried to look at that aspect. And there's a lot of kids that get down in there and play. And I don't know if the city would take it upon themselves to speak to the water department and see if they couldn't fill that for us. Because we're, I think it's $4,000 in arrears right now for filling that lake. And since so many people have moved away and their rent and their property, they don't want to pay to have that filled. And it's an advantage to have that to cut down on all the sickness that can generate from that. And also, when it's flooding here, all those creeks go into the lake. So the streets are not flooded. So I think it would behoove the city to kind of help us with that to get some water in there. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next one is Taylor Kramer. I don't know if he's here. 411 North Ware Road, McHellin, Texas. And would you like to be called? No? He does have some comments, so if you want me to read them.
Is that... And you said it's from where? I'm sorry?
McHellin.
Is this relevant to...
Civic education.
Let's... Can I have... Take a look at that, and we'll move on to the next one.
Okay. The next one is Pastor Luis Cabrera. 205 South Gate Drive. The topic is new business. Item number seven.
Good afternoon, City Commissioners and Mayor. Hello?
Hello.
I'm here because I know there is a business that wants to open up here in Harlingen, if I'm correct. And it's number seven on the agenda, on a new business. It's an adult business. And as a pastor and as a faith leader, I represent a lot of faith leaders here in Harlingen and its community. And you know what? That kind of business will destroy a lot of young lives. It will destroy marriages. It will destroy people in general. It increases the odds of teenage pregnancy. It hinders sexual development. It raises the risk of depression. And so as you see, that business right there is not... I don't think it's needed here in Harlingen. Because again, this city, I love this city. I love this community. And we've got to be a beacon of light for everyone else. So I want to just share my views and my points on that business. And I pray that you guys cancel that permit so they can operate. And if you have any questions, please call me. Some of you city council members know me personally. And so I appreciate your time. And I pray and hope that the city of Harlingen continues being a beacon of hope and light for the RGV. God bless you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pastor.
Bless you.
Okay, just give me one second. Thank you.
Mayor, my recommend...
Okay, if you will, go ahead.
Mayor, my recommendation is that simply be entered into the record just by handing it to the city secretary. It doesn't have to be read.
Wonderful. Thank you. Moving forward, and why most of you are here, presentations for proclamations and recognitions of awards. We will start with the proclamation proclaiming April 1st, 2023 as Vicenta Barrientos' 101st birthday. Christina?
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, City Management, and our guests who are with us today. Thank you so much for joining us. We have a lot of special guests that are joining us here today. We have five recognitions of five different groups and people. So we want to thank you for taking the time out of your day to join us at the City Commission meeting. First, we have one of Vicenta's friends. She's not here with us today. She's turning 101 years old, so that's a really big deal. Hopefully, we can make it that far as well. So we have Vicenta's friend, Gwen Carson, who reached out to us. She is sitting up front, as well as Veronica Garcia and Umberto Castaneda. They're the owners of Mom &amp; Dad Adult Daycare here in Harlingen. That is where Vicenta actually spends some of her day. They say that she, at 101 years old, is completely full of life and a warm and beautiful human being. So the mayor and city commission are proclaiming her 101st birthday. And I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Mrs. Vicenta Barrientos was born on April 1st, 1922, in La Palma neighborhood in San Benito, and attended school until third grade. Mrs. Barrientos married at an early age and has one daughter, Edistina Espinoza. Two great-grandchildren and one great-great-grandchild. And she is a member of St. Teresa Catholic Church. She enjoys going to the daycare center, enjoys the company of her friends, playing chalupa, and listening to music. One song in particular brings her a lot of joy. She attributes her longevity to faith in God and healthy eating. Whereas during her long and productive lifetime of 101 years, she has earned the respect and admiration of her friends, family, and people from all walks of life. And on April 1st, 2023, Mrs. Barrientos celebrated her 101st birthday with her family. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor of the city of Harlingen, Norma Sepulveda, do hereby proclaim April 1st as Mrs. Vicenta Barrientos' 101st birthday. Please join us up front as the mayor presents the proclamation.
When the city celebrated its 100th year anniversary, we had those medals created. And we had a special day that any citizen that was at least 100 years old received one of those. And so we had those made for that occasion. And we still have a few left, so we'd like to present her one. The mayor's going to give... He wanted to give to her, so...
So she is the special of the club, and we present this to her. And we would like to thank her. And I don't have a...
Awesome. Not a lot of people get those medals, so thank you so much for joining us.
Moving on to proclaiming the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2023 as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. Christina?
Awesome. So we are joined today by Senior Animal Control Officer Jessie Penya, who could stand to be recognized, as well as Animal Control Officer Robert Banda, Animal Control Officer Matthew Bravo, and Officer Matthew Salazar, as well as the interim health director, Shannon Harville. Awesome. So I'd like Shannon to invite Shannon up to share a few words about what her staff does every day before this week is proclaimed.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. The four animal control officers work tirelessly, day in, day out, addressing calls every day. One of them is on call 24/7, 365 days a year. They get called out at 2:00 in the morning. They get called out for all sorts of things. It's not just about dogs, dogs, cats, bees, snakes, coyotes, javelinas, anything related to animals. We either address, or we refer it to the... We help coordinate and refer it to the proper agency. All four of these gentlemen are very much animal lovers and do everything within their power to protect the animals the best we can based on the laws that we work within. So it's truly deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. The proclamation being presented reads as follows. Whereas the National Animal Control Association has designated the second week of April each year as National Animal Control Appreciation Week. And whereas various federal, state, and local government officials throughout the country take this time to recognize, thank, and commend all animal control officers and animal services staff for the dedicated service they provide to the citizens, various public safety and public service agencies and departments across the country. Whereas in 2022, the city of Harlingen Animal Control received 7,076 calls, handled 1,541 strays, picked up 2,284 animals, and assisted in 153 bite cases. Whereas the city of Harlingen recognizes the animal control officers for their many dedicated and long hours of service they perform in serving the residents of our community and fulfilling the city of Harlingen's animal controls commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor of the city of Harlingen, Norma Sepulveda, on behalf of the entire city commission, does hereby proclaim April 9th through the 15th as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. Congratulations. We'd like to invite them up front to receive the proclamation as well as take a photo with the city commission.
Okay. Yes. All right, ready? One, two, three. And then one more. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you, guys. Moving on to C, proclaiming the week of April 10th through the 14th, 2023 as Community Development Week. Christina?
Yes. So from our community development department, joining us here today, we have Sandy, who is the director, as well as Jessica Fuller, who is our housing coordinator. I'd like to invite Sandy up front to introduce her board members, who are also here today taking part of this special celebration.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, the city of Harlingen is very fortunate to be an entitlement community for CBG funds. Every year, we do receive about $900,000 for wonderful projects that we do in the community, from housing to streets, parks, you name it, for low-income neighborhoods and low-income... our low-income residents. So with that, I would like to present the board members that are here today. We have our vice chair, Ms. Elaine Flores, our parliamentarian, Mr. Cesar Morales. Board members, we have Ms. Sonia Casas, Ms. Sylvia Flores, and Ms. Lorraine Galarza. And as Jessica said, I'm sorry. As Christina said, we have Jessica here as well, our housing coordinator. Thank you.
Awesome. So please remain standing as we read the proclamation and present Community Development Week. So whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has existed since 1974 to provide local governments with resources required to primarily meet the needs of low- and moderate-income persons. And whereas the city of Harlingen receives a direct allocation from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development annually to provide resources for a wide variety of community development activities that benefit low- and moderate-income persons. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has provided the city of Harlingen with important financial assistance to meet the needs of residents by funding water, sewer, and street improvement projects, public safety projects, housing, and other public service projects. Whereas in our community and communities throughout the nation, 48 years of Community Development Block Grant Program funding has built a strong network of relationships among local governments, residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations. Whereas the week of April 10th through the 14th has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate, recognize, and appreciate the Community Development Block Grant Program. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Norma Sepulveda, on behalf of the city commission, proclaims April 10th, 2023 through April 14th, 2023, as Community Development Week and congratulates all those who are in support of it. We invite the board, as well as the staff up front, to receive the proclamation along with the city commission.
On behalf of the board... On behalf of the board, I would like to publicly thank Sandy and the entire staff because without all the hard work that they do, we wouldn't be an effective board. And I'd like to also extend my gratitude to each one of you all that made the appointments of each one of us to the board and having that faith and confidence in us that we're able to provide the best that we can for our low-income neighborhoods. And thank you all so much for everything that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you. And through this wonderful board, for those of you that may not know, that are here today and those that are watching from home... And through this wonderful board, for those of you that may not know, that are here today and those that are watching from home, we recently were able to change the lives, right, of two families through the, the efforts of, of this board and through the staff. We were able to completely renovate two homes from the ground up and change the lives of two families here in the City of Harlingen. So we do truly appreciate all of the hard work that you put in and of course, all of the volunteers as well. We know that it's a, it's a commitment of your time and we are truly appreciative. Thank you. Alright, moving on to Item D. Raquel Uvalde, Harlingen North Cardinals State Powerlifting Champions Winner.
Yes, so we have a very special guest, a state champion in the room with us here today. She, her name is Raquel Uvaya and she is a Harlingen High School student and recently secured the powerlifting state championship. If you could stand to be recognized. Joining her today is Harlingen High School Powerlifting Head Coach Nathan Aguilar. And she also has the support of her mom, right, who is joining her as well today. We can't forget the moms, they're super important. So Raquel lifted a total of a thousand one hundred and five pounds at the state championship held in Frisco this month. Not only should, did she lift it once, she actually did a combined three lifts of a hundred and, a thousand one hundred and five pounds. Not only is she a state champion, but she is also the first powerlifting state champion in the school's history. So we want to congratulate her for that.
What an amazing accomplishment. We are all so proud and we are so proud that you are allowing us to share in this moment. This is amazing, I'm sure mom is, is excited and I know Coach, this must be just, you know, this is history that, that you're making, so it's really incredible. And I love it that you're a woman and you're doing it. So congratulations to you. We have an award for her, correct? Can the Commission join me? Amazing. Alright, moving on, we have the Harlingen South Lady Hawk Soccer Team. Christina?
Alrighty, can y'all hear?
Yes.
During their season, they scored a total of seventy-four goals and they had nine goals scored against them. There are currently four seniors on the team this year with the team mostly made up of sophomores and juniors. So we're definitely looking to, looking forward to another successful season next year. Joining them today, of course, are the girls from the team. If y'all could please stand if you're on the soccer team. As well as Head Coach Deborah Bovan. And we also want to make sure to recognize their families. So if you're a family member of one of these girls, please stand at this time. So the Mayor and City Commission are presenting you all today with a recognition award. The City of Harlingen congratulates and proudly presents this award to the Harlingen South Hawks Varsity Soccer Team. Congratulations. Y'all want to come up front so we can take a photo with the, the team and the coach? And we also have Assistant Coach Ariana Montalvo, who's also joining the team today. Congratulations.
Alright, moving right along. Going to Item Two, Approval of Minutes, Two A, the regular minutes of February fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We'll do that next time. So we had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the Consent Agenda, we have Items A through F. Is there anything that we need to amend or take out?
If you pull C and F, please.
Okay, pulling C and F, anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A, Three, A through F with the exception of C and F?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Item C, Three C, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve the Installation of Speed Humps on the Following Streets, Twenty-seven-hundred Block of Condesa, nine-hundred, one-thousand Block of Lavaca, seven-hundred to eight-hundred Block of West Lincoln, North J Street between West Washington Avenue and West Jefferson Avenue, and six-oh-nine McCrowsky in District Two.
I would just like to expand the language on the North J Street to be North J Street between West Washington Avenue and West Jefferson Avenue, that area. And then if we can make sure it's multiple speed humps.
Did we get that? Correct, okay. Anything else on that?
I was hoping to add something to it.
Okay.
I got a request today, if you can, they can do a study on North Parkwood Drive between Laurel Drive and East Senzio, Senizo Drive. Senizo Drive.
Is, would that be here? Because these are to approve the installation. Would that be on, would this be, would that be okay? Okay, okay, great. Alright, and so you have that? Yep, any, anyone else? So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Item Three C with the amendments that Commissioner Pettis and I have made on the record.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Item F, Consideration and Possible Action to Revise the Resolution Approved at the City Commission Meeting in November second, twenty twenty-two to change the name of Mid Valley Marathon to South Texas International Marathon. Okay?
Mayor Members of the Commission, this simply changes the name of the organization that wants to do the, the half marathon here in the valley. It does not commit us to any funding. So it's just simply a name change from Mid Valley Marathon to South Texas International Marathon. Everything else, and the resolution stayed the same.
Excuse me, you, I believe you said half marathon, it's a full marathon.
Did I say half marathon? It's a, it's a full marathon.
Full marathon.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what it says, I think, yes. Was there any discussion questions?
No, that was the only question I had. There's a couple of formatting issues on it, I just don't want us to sign and have to sign it again. Did we get this in Word?
I believe so.
Um, I, I'm not sure.
I can tell.
Yeah, if you can just fix the formatting, then otherwise, if we're not tied to any money, that's fine.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Make the motion to approve this one. Item with the changes, the formatting changes.
Okay, I got, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Four, Moving on to New Business, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve the Preliminary Construction Plans and Final Plot with a Variance Request Regarding the Minimum Lot Width for Lots One and Seven Through Ten for the Proposed Coakley Estates Four Subdivision, Bearing a Legal Description of four-point-two-three acres of land out of Blocks Four and Six, Coakley Village Subdivision Located on the South Side of Bush Street, West of Reagan Street. Javier?
Mayor and City Commission, good evening. This is another subdivision nearby, Coakley Middle School. Initially, it was processed initially in ninety-four. Two phases got completed back in ninety-four and two phases were not completed. So they, they have vested rights. In this case, the, so because they have vested rights, they only have to comply with the drainage for, from back then. But the developer is, wants to do the right thing, the right thing and provide drainage for today's standards, which is a fifty-year storm. So the developer is asking for, for help in with the variance on the lot frontage, for the lots, the lots in yellow. And the, the, this lot in orange is the proposed detention pond. So he's just asking for the variance on the lot frontage for the other four lots in yellow so that he can comply with today's drainage requirements.
Thank you Javier, do we have any questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you Javier. Item Five, this item was tabled at the last meeting and I do believe that there are still some, some things that we're waiting on and I'd recommend that the Commission, I guess we can just pass on it for now. Okay. Well, moving on to Item Six, Public Hearing and Possible Action to Adopt an Ordinance on First Reading for a Rezoning Request from Office O District to General Retail District for a property legally described as the South thirty-five, thirty-five feet of Lot Two and the west parts of Lots Two and Three except for the first one hundred and fifteen feet. Block Five, a Royal Estate Subdivision Located at the Northeast Corner of Lubbock and Jones Street. And Javier?
Yes, Mayor, this is a property near the hospital at the corner of Lavaca and Jones. The, the zoning in that whole, all those blocks is for offices and you have mostly offices in that, in that area. The zoning across the street is single-family residential. So the proposal is a restaurant in this property here. So that's why this request is, is coming before you because the, the office zoning does not allow restaurants.
Javier?
Yes.
What's the NS on that one block? NS and Nancy?
Oh, over here?
Yes.
Neighborhood Services. Neighborhood Services zoning. It just, it just allows, like duties allowance, you know. Businesses that cater to neighborhoods. But for a restaurant, the zoning needed is, is general retail district. This is the aerial photograph of the property, so there's an office building here with the parking lot. That's the photo of the property from the street. And in the comprehensive plan, it calls for commercial, so it's in line. The request is in line with our comprehensive plan. And so that's why staff is recommending approval to the rezoning request. We did have some opposition during the Plank and Sony Commission Public Hearing. Mr. and Mrs. Mario Garcia spoke in opposition, they live across the street from the proposed rezoning and they cited concerns with traffic and property tax concerns. The board recommended approval unanimously.
Thank you Javier. Was there any other questions for Javier? Okay, at this time we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one here to speak on or against, we will close the public hearing and I'll ask the city manager to read the caption. City Attorney. You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item Seven, Public Hearing and Possible Action to Adopt an Ordinance on First Reading for a Special Use Permit to Allow an Adult Business in a General Retail District Located at four-oh-five West Harrison Avenue, Suite A, Bearing a Legal Description of Lot Ten, Block Eighty-four, Harlingen Original Town Site. And Javier?
Yes, so this is a proposed adult business on the south, on the south side of Harrison, between C and D Streets. This is the suite for this business is proposed. So it's two suites in this, in this building and so they're proposed to go in, in this suite here on, on the left. This is the aerial photo of the property, so this is the suite for this business is proposed. That's the floor plan. In this application, they state that they're proposing sixty percent clothing sales. And then the rest will be adult number three items. Based on the applications submitted, the proposed business is not being classified as a sexually oriented business in the zoning ordinance and therefore it could be approved if the SUP is granted.
There we, yeah, there we go. It says sixty percent clothing, I can't read the other.
Twenty percent shoes, ten percent adult toys, ten percent books and DVDs.
And was there any opposition at the?
Yes, there was, uh, uh, during citizen com- citizen, citizen communication during the planning and zoning meeting. As two speak, uh, two property owners, uh, called with comments, uh. The or- uh, the owner of Taqueria La Fogata and the, uh, elegant, uh, business. They, they called with in, in opposition to the proposed business. Uh, but they did not come to the meeting, it was on the phone.
Okay.
You go back to the picture, if anybody noticed, you have a bar right next to the, uh. To the. You wanna call it novelty store?
Yeah, El Cisne, El Cisne Bar.
Yeah, and, uh. Just down the street in years past, that's when the police department has always had their stings for prostitution. Uh, and back in the day, when I was a kid, that was the area for a lot of bars in that area, at that area. So. This, this. This business does intend itself to try to clean that up. Alright, so me personally, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments for Javier?
And then I, I can give you the, uh, so, planning and zoning commission recommended approval, they added conditions. So if, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna go over the conditions. Uh, so the first condition that it has to be a minimum of sixty percent sales of clothing. The SUP shall be for one year from the opening of the business. Uh, one month prior to the one year anniversary of the opening of the business, public hearings shall be scheduled with the planning and zoning commission and the city commission. To consider extending the SUP. Uh, number three, provisions shall be made to differentiate, differentiate clothing sales from non-clothing sales. And the applicant shall submit evidence to the planning director at any time as requested to prove compliance with number one above. The name of the business must be changed, the new business name shall be approved by the city attorney. Get all the permits, thirty day, uh, video surveillance and then approval from all the departments.
Number four, what is the name of the business?
So the original name was, uh, Triple X. Uh, the, uh, the applicant has a new name, uh, that has been approved.
Um, as much as I am for small businesses and I, I think that. You know, Commissioner Morales brings up a good point on the location. Um, unfortunately, the chief's not here, I wish I could. Talk to him a little bit about this, but I am concerned about the location. Of the business and if we're already having issues in that area, that this is just going to, to add to that. I don't know about the sixty percent of sales. Must be clothing, what, i- is this clothing, what kind of clothing, do you know?
Well, so, what was discussed during the planning and zoning commission, uh, meeting is that it will be a business similar to Victoria's Secret, uh, at La Plaza Mall. So, you know, it's, it's clothing.
Well, Victoria's Secret doesn't sell, um, adult toys and, um, other items that were listed on there, so I don't. Wouldn't imagine that that's a true representation of, of that. Uh, those are, that's just, those are my thoughts. Uh, I don't know if that's the right location for a business, uh, uh, a business like that.
Would you be comfortable to table this after we get feedback from the police chief?
I would, because if we're having issues in that area, we wanna make it easier for, for law enforcement to, to do its job. Um, unless, uh, anybody else happen, we, we still have to open it up to the public hearing. Do you have any questions? No? Okay, um, thank you Javier. At this time, um, we will. Open up the public hearing, is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against? Okay. You could just please state your, your name?
Yes, uh, my name's April Lozano, I'm the one that's opening the business.
Okay.
Um, I am aware of the situation of downtown and, um, basically I'm just focusing more on. Bringing more clothing, like more for the women on the plus side. Cause the issues that are going on in the other places that are around the area, there also are adult shops, they don't have enough clothing. And, um, very minimal on the other things, we're just mainly focusing more on clothing for them. Cause I've had several customers that I know personally, they have walked into these places. And they can never find something their size. Everything's like for the thin and, you know, so it's mainly focused on them and the shop's name's gonna be the shoe shop. Like the shish, like, like silent, like, you know, that was a new name I came up with. And of course, we're gonna ID and then, um, we already more or less know the people around the area. They're obviously up to no good, so they wouldn't be allowed to come in anyways. And then we also gonna have like, how to practice safe sex. And there's gonna be a lot of resources for people who have HIV, STDs, um, things like that.
And so when you're talking about clothing, are you talking about lingerie?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, and that's the only type of, and was that presented to the planning and zoning, that that would be the type of clothing?
Yes ma'am, and they've already, uh, gone inspected the location twice.
Okay.
Within the month.
Does anybody have questions for the? For Ms. Lozano?
I'm gonna uplift the outside, I know the outside looks like an eyesore. Um, so I definitely wanted to bring something from the city, I'm from San Antonio, so I wanted to bring something from the city. Over here downtown and I figured since there's a bar, there's several bars around me and stuff, I mean, all of us are aware of the area. You know, they go in wherever, as long as we know that you're not, they're not welcome here, you know, we don't allow that kind of stuff as far as like prostitution and whatnot.
So you said you're from San Antonio?
Yes sir, I was living there for seventeen years, I just moved back originally from Brownsville, Texas. And then, um, my mom remarried or whatnot and so I did grow up here.
Just to my point though, do you have any kind of these businesses in San Antonio?
Yes sir. Especially for the big women.
What are they called?
Different names sir, they have like the closet, the bottom drawer.
Thank you, Ms. Lozano.
Yes, thank you guys.
Is there anyone else, um, wishing to speak for or against?
Again, good afternoon, um, or good evening. I think the primary goal of the, the mayor and the commissioner and most of us here from Harlingen is that. We need to clean up a lot of areas here in Harlingen. And especially that area, we need to clean it up because, yes, and having belonged to the citizens' police alumni. And riding along with the officers, we did, I did see a lot of problems in that area. La Placita or, or Gutierrez Park, whichever way you wanna call it. Has been cleaned up quite a bit and I think we still have some work that needs to be done there. Myself being a plus girl. And going to a place to get special lingerie, whatever. And knowing that there's a, a specific store for that, but it's surrounded by bars. And other things like that, I would not go to a place like that. Uh, I'm not saying that everybody's allowed to do whatever they want to do, to make their business and everything. But I think, uh, if we're wanting to clean up Harlingen and we're trying to. Get, uh, our society or our children, whatever, and especially right now that we're trying to. Do more events at Gutierrez Park involving the families. I think this would be a deterrent for people to want to go to the park and make it again what it used to be, a family park. When I was growing up, that was a family park. We would have our Easters there, we would have our picnics there, what have you, until a lot of these bars started coming up and what have you. So I think this would, and also being involved with a restaurant that is, uh. Behind, that would be behind there. Uh, I think it would deter a lot of people from going there and I don't think the business would really, uh, prosper there. I think it would be a bad investment for, for the property owner. Uh, if she wants to add that kind of a, a business, I think there's another place for it, there's plenty of space. At the mall right now, there's a lot of empty spaces that can be used there. If, uh, you know. Victoria's Secret, m- mayor, as you said, uh, yes, it's, uh, lingerie, but it's a tasteful lingerie. And I think that some of the, uh. Conditions that were set out by her in her presentation misrepresent, for example, clothing. Specifically, what clothing, shoes, what kind of shoes, uh. And why do you wanna name it something that is not, uh. It doesn't give you the right picture of what she's saying she wants to put there. And it's more of, okay, once you get there, it's different, so I'm opposed to it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Having no one else to speak, we will close the public hearing. I'd encourage the commission to move to table.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to table until the police chief can confer, uh, with all of us or the mayor herself.
Do a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. I didn't hear you, um, commissioner.
This man, I said aye, I didn't like.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
I clicked off, I muted my microphone.
No problem. Wanna let you know, we still, we know you're there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We know you're working hard in Austin.
Yes ma'am.
Items, okay, moving on to. Item eight, presentation and request for direction from the city commission regarding an amendment. To the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one oh nine subdivisions, Article five, Section one oh nine. Dash one twenty-five curbing gutter requirements to subdivisions located outside of the city limits. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, uh, we have two subdivisions in process right now in the ETJ, ETJ means the Exoterritorial Juris典型. Both subdivisions are one mile and one point five miles away from the city limits. Um, both develop, different developers and they're both, uh, wanting to build the internal streets without curbing gutters. So having like drainage wells on the sides. Uh. So, right now we're presenting the concept of, uh, amending the subdivision ordinance where we will allow subdivisions like that. Uh, only in the ETJ if the lots are half acre or bigger in area. So we're presenting this, uh, concept to you, if you agree. I can process, I can start processing this subdivision ordinance amendment and schedule public hearings.
I got it, um, I think maybe this question is for Luis. Thank you Javier.
Good evening, Mayor Luis Valaka, City Engineer for the Record, yes ma'am.
Thank you Luis, I'd like to, to hear your thoughts on this.
So, um, there's two ways we can convey the storm runoff to a stream, right? With a roadside ditch or curb and gutter. Um, and curb and gutter means that we're gonna have an underground system, right? If you compare the curb and gutter with the underground, uh, system to the just roadside ditch, you don't have underground system, right? Um, they both have advantages and disadvantages, um, they both require maintenance. Um, typically, a ditch doesn't get bigger with time, right? I mean. Um, it gets clogged with time, same as the underground system. Um, we, uh, I guess in my opinion, a. A roadside ditch is, is better suited for bigger lots, um. Typically, more than five acres, m- m- I'm sorry, point five acres, uh, and that's because you allow. The, uh, lot, the pervious cover to detain some of the stormwater runoff and, and not. Take it to a stream as, as fast enough. Um, the disadvantage of a, a roadside ditch is also that it doesn't take the flow as fast enough as the stormwater, uh, underground system would. And, uh, I mean, I guess there, there's a debate, right? I mean, you could, they're, they both have pros and cons, in other words. Um, I think. A five acre lot or maybe a little bit more is, is reasonable, uh, is, is something that we could, I guess, agree, um. And, and that's, I guess, my, my thoughts on, on both systems. Both take the stormwater runoff to a, a, a stream, a canal, a drainage ditch. Uh, if that canal is capable enough to handle the, the stormwater, uh, volume, then both would work. Um, if, if, if an engineer provides this evidence that, you know, this scenario with, with a roadside ditch would. Prevent more flooding, then we were more than welcome to see that evidence and, and recommend, you know. Approval for that. And, and that's my take on, 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 on the topic.
And so these two pending projects, is that correct? The two pending projects, it, what is your recommendation on, on those? If you were taking it, you know, case by case basis, um, I don't know what this, if, you know, is it, they're not five, five acre lots, correct?
They're, they're half acre, um, if, if. Evidence is provided with the, with the drainage report, uh, maybe with a small H and H, uh, hydrologic and hydraulic analysis on the area. Uh, and, and the existing drainage master plan is analyzed or taken into account as well. Uh, the engineer presents the, uh, evidence and the analysis and, and says that this is. Uh, comparable or better than a curb and gutter, an underground system, then it, they would, I would recommend approval.
Okay, and you're not at that stage yet, is that?
So, to, to get to that stage, the ordinance needs to be amended to allow, to allow that concept. Of subdivisions in the ETJ.
Okay, and, and so.
Right now, they can't even, right now, these two subdivisions are stuck. Because we require curb and gutter and they, they don't wanna do the curb and gutter, so they're, they're just, they're going nowhere.
Understood.
So that, um, if it comes to ditches now, and sooner or later. It becomes not ETJ, but Harlingen City Limits.
Yeah, so that's the other thing.
Then the taxpayers would have to bear the cost of curb and gutter, correct?
So something to, so something to keep in mind is that the legislature took our annexation powers away, uh, you, four years ago.
Six, six years.
Yeah, so all we have left is voluntary annexations. So these subdivisions are very likely to be in the county and they will stay in the county. So that's why this proposal is only for subdivisions in the, in the ETJ only.
Okay, and so for the engineer drainage ditches, this would all have to be designed to hold. What, twenty, forty, fifty year floodwaters?
Correct, they, they would still have to detain, uh, to the fifty year storm.
And so.
Could, because we are.
Go ahead.
As a group in total, concerned about flooding, potential flooding, future flooding. Future building, future flooding with building. I repeat myself.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I agree with the commissioner, um, so with this, should this, should the commission decide to approve? Um, this would still fall under your recommendation, Luis, where not. You know, the last thing I would want is, okay, so this is now on the books and now, you know, any, any, um, developer is able to. To take advantage of this and then it, it, it ultimately leads to these problems. Is it something that, this is just giving them the opportunity to take the next step, so that way you can further. Analyze and, and get those reports to see that it, that it's the right step to take, such as. With our other policy with the widening of the ditch, right? Sometimes you're gonna approve, sometimes you're not, is this similar to that?
I, I would, I, yes, yes, that is similar, um.
The subdivision still has to be processed by the city because, uh, it's in our ETJ. So the drainage report goes to engineering for approval. So it will not go to the planning and zoning commission for approval until he approves the drainage report.
If I may, the, the, having roadside ditches will entails no underground system, right? So no, uh, twenty-five year, uh, storms for design storm system underground, right? That's the. And no, uh, infrastructure as the curb and gutter, uh, you know, conveying the, the stormwater, that, that's also difference and. As I mentioned, both have pros and cons, um, it is less expensive, of course, to go with the roadside, um, ditches. Cause concrete, you know, uh, goes through the curb and gutter and inlets and, 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 and the system, right? The, the underground system. As with, you know, any lots, uh, normal size or just, you know, average, uh, lot size. Curbing gutter, underground system, go in. Curb and gutter underground system, go into a a box cover or a a. Stream or a canal or a drainage ditch ditch nearby. Both both go into a, I guess, a stream at the end. How they do it and how fast they do it, that's the question we can analyze what what the engineer provides to us in the drainage report.
But there's more work to be done, more studying to be done. That's what I'm I'm picking up.
That's correct, yes.
These are uh half acres lots, right?
Correct.
And uh we could go with half acres or anything uh that's bigger than a half acre. To avoid potential extra flooding or potential flooding for the future.
Correct, the bigger the lot, the better, because you have more pervious cover, uh more soils that infiltrate the 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 volume of the. Stormwater falling to the ground, so um it's debatable the size of the lot, right? Uh the minimum right now is point five. We, I guess we talked about point seventy-five, one acre, uh uh, you know, the average lot size for. For the houses that, you know, seen here, you know, in general, point one, point two uh acres. Uh smaller than point five.
Are there any other questions? Um and so, this is an action item, right? You're seeking.
Uh staff is seeking direction, mayor, there, um it's not an action item per se, but it does call for direction. On whether to proceed with amending the uh the subdivision, the code of ordinances to allow for this type of development.
So what you're proposing is to inject engineering science and common sense into a formula? Uh yeah, I'm I'm all in favor of giving you the leeway to conduct it as is proposed.
And I second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you both. Item nine, consideration and possible action to approve a permit with Harlingen Irrigation District Cameron County number one. To allow the city to encroach on their right of way for the purpose of improvements to Long Sea Hill Destination Park. And authorize the city manager to execute any related documents. And.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, uh Craig Cook, Assistant City Manager. Javier Mendez is at a conference, I hope to join him in the morning, so I'm pinch hitting. And I'm looking for slides.
That, that that's two baseball references in a few seconds, slides and pinch hitting.
And and he said he doesn't have my slides, so I'm gonna wing it.
So it's a strikeout.
We have faith in you, Craig.
Okay, here we go. I had the slides because your packet is a bit incomplete, it's missing the signatory page of the permit. And one drawing, so uh if you'll allow. So, we're all familiar with the area of Long Sea Hill Destination Park, to include the park. Uh this baseball stadium, uh that area of town, that's what we're talking about. Uh Tuesday, we will be opening bids for what's called Phase Two. Which is the construction of the hiking, uh sorry, the walking trail. That goes around the baseball stadium and the uh improvements uh. For the uh little softball field that's off into the corner of the park. Uh that that will be an adaptive field for uh for the kids with AstroTurf and such. Um the trail on the west side of the stadium. Actually encroaches into the uh irrigation districts. Right of way, and so we ask for a permit uh from the irrigation district. To allow for that encroachment, uh see, he's remembering. So that we can uh build this uh trail. And while we're at this, there's also two other uh areas that encroach. And they are the parking lots associated with the clinic, the the health. Uh center that's there uh to the west uh and north of the swimming pool. There's a, ah, see, I've done all this explaining and I and I could have just pointed. So, the red line, thank you, Sergio, the red line is the boundary of the right of way for the irrigation district. You can see where the where the trail encroaches it there. And you can see where the parking lot encroaches it there, there, and there.
And that, excuse me, does encroach mean walking on top of the levy bank?
Uh, no, this this is in their right of way, the the ditch is.
Do they have any problem with allowing people walking their right of way?
No, in fact, uh that it's it's road, it it's a roadway up up here. Uh so.
They're they're willing to give us a use of that.
Yeah.
By their approach on the right of way, so.
Yeah, thi- this is in their space that they would use to maintain their ditch. Um so the permit has a, uh next slide, oh, I'm sorry, I got it. So the permit has a listing right there, and this is what is changed from your packet. Uh we wanted to uh include the drawings that describe this work into the permit. Uh so that we don't have a gentleman's agreement of what's included, we want to be specific. And so those are uh drawings two point zero, two point one, two point two, three point zero. And a uh an extra drawing, that's A one oh one, and if you want to check my work. Two, two point oh, two point one, two point two, two point, uh three point oh. And A one oh one, so these will be attached to the permit to clearly show where the. Uh encroachments are. And that's what we're asking, uh asking for the authority for the city manager to sign this permit. Uh for forty years of permission.
It seems to me that the drainage district doesn't mind, then it's a go.
Is there a motion?
We 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 will so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to uh permit, uh to approve a permit as presented by Mr. Cook. For the Harlingen Irrigation District Cameron County number one, to allow the city to encroach on their right of way for the purpose of improvements. To Long Sea Hill Destination Park and authorize the city manager to execute any related documents.
Craig, before we move, uh the second line, it says receipt of fees. I just wanted to click clarification with that man.
Is it on that page, Commissioner?
Yes, it is. So it's the first, second line from the top. For and in consideration of the receipt of fees, right?
Um there there is no fee.
Okay.
Yeah, fair, fair and equitable consideration.
Exactly, exactly, I meant it there. Okay, are you, uh Mark, you're good with it? Or, then I'll second um Commissioner Mesmo's uh motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, apologize for the clums- clumsiness without the drawings.
Thank you, Craig. Item ten, uh consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to request. A twenty twenty-four community project funding from U S Representative Vicente Gonzalez. Gabe?
Um mayor, members of the commission, we submitted several projects, ten projects to be exact, to um. Representative Gonzalez's office, uh they have chosen to uh to fund. The Fifth and Seventh Street Drainage Project. Now, initially in my Friday memo, I did state that the amount. Requested was a little over three million, three point one, that number has changed to five point eight million. Uh they still agreed to fund that project and to fund the uh the radio. Equipment for the police and fire department valued at six hundred thousand dollars. So they won a resolution stating that the city supports those projects. Uh there probably will be a twenty-five percent match on the drainage project. But um if there is, we can take funding from the ARPA funds to actually provide that match, so that means that we would get about. Three point eight million from um from uh the federal government for that project. So we are recommending approval of the resolution.
I'll make the motion if no one has any questions.
I I have a question, I have a couple, on the that engineering of the project Fifth and the Fifth and Seventh Street. What what are the cross streets? Is this where the Copley Estates is at?
Uh it's right here behind City Hall, this area. It's between Commerce uh and Sixth Street. Correct?
Yeah, that's that's correct.
And the engineering, the Jefferson Avenue, where's that at? Where's the cross street?
That one, it follows the railroad tracks, it's over there by Alicia's, no, it's east of Alicia's by the library.
So once again, that's near Commerce.
Uh, between Commerce and thirteenth. Thirteenth is the one that goes right in front of Vernon and.
So the whole area?
No, it's not the whole area, I'm just giving you a general overview of that.
But but that one wasn't picked up for funding.
Right, so just a.
We submitted it, but they said, no, they're not gonna fund that one, they're gonna fund the Fifth and Seventh, which is what we're asking for authorization for today, not the Jefferson.
Got it, thank you.
So I'll make the motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution supporting the artificial drainage system legislation filed by State Representative Janie Lopez. And State Senator Morgan LaMantilla. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, Rolando Bella with uh CCD five is here. And he's asking for support in the uh, the project was submitted to the state for uh funding, so Rolando?
Uh I saw Gabe a few hours ago in the metro, in Austin, a few hours ago. Uh thank you for putting this item on the agenda, we think it's important to raise awareness on the challenges. Uh the valley faces along with the coastal and border areas, that we're flat. We don't have these natural road or floodways that other communities have. If you notice, if you drive to Austin, you're going uphill downhill, we don't have that, we're flat. And so what we're doing is trying to raise awareness, get cities, counties. Uh local developers, engineers, as a matter of fact, I have one of them. Dustin Moore, who signed the letter, he and his brother explaining, shedding light on the challenges. Uh the communities have, because we're flat. And so we're, we're trying to raise awareness and at the same time mobilize support from the various communities. As of today, I think I have reached out to over twenty cities in the valley, uh including counties. Uh have about ten letters of support, and so we're trying to raise awareness. Uh and we think this is important, uh like I indicated yesterday in chatting with one of the state representatives, this is not a. Drainage issue, this is a development issue. And the former city manager, we would always, when a business wanted to come into town, they were always inquiring about water and sewer. Well, the narrative needs to be changed to reflect, you also need drainage. And so, this is a message that I think is very important, and I think uh this legislation. Will help support development uh in the communities, and we're excited about it. And we're hoping to get some traction. The Natural Resource Committee next Tuesday in the House will hold a hearing. And we're working on an effort to get it on the Senate Committee. I met with the uh the legislative manager yesterday, uh trying to get it on their Senate Committee, get it moving forward. And so we're excited about this, we appreciate your consideration. And mayor, we appreciate your support, all of you, they've been active and working with us, and. Hope I don't have to apologize, but I've been bombarding you with emails, keeping you updated on what we're doing. And so, thank you. Be more than glad to address any questions you may have on the resolution, on artificial drainage systems. Um it's reached a point that if you were to call me at three in the morning, I would probably be able to tell you. Uh specifically about the resolution, about the bills, because I've been dealing with this for the past three or four weeks.
So I don't have a a question, Rolando, I just want to commend you for all your hard work, I know you've been working really hard on this and um. You know, I know that, um I'm sure everyone here on the commission is here to support you and your efforts, because. Working with you is is helps our community as well, so collaborating with you is a benefit for. For Harlingen and we we thank you for all of your your hard work out there in Austin, I know it's not easy.
Thank you.
Um is, does anybody have any question?
Question, is this the first time the concept of uh artificial drainage system? Has, is this the first time it's been brought up to the legislators?
To my knowledge, it is. Obviously, it's an ongoing challenge and issue that among the engineering circles, they talk about it, they're familiar with it. I know Dustin is familiar with this challenge that the community has, but I don't think it's ever been brought. Forward, and and I think we're making progress.
Sounds it, sounds like you are, appreciate it.
I mean, I would, as a former teacher, I would tell my kids, I'd rather you fall forward. Uh you you're making an effort, you know, as opposed to stand still, so we're hoping to fall forward and in the process, get something going here. Thank you again.
Staff does recommend approval of the resolution.
Make the motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution reaffirming the designated signatories on the city of Harlingen's bank account and investment pools. Robert?
Good evening, mayor, uh city commissioners, uh we are asking to uh pass a resolution to reaffirm the signatories of. The city manager, Gabe Gonzalez, uh myself, and Kareem Abdullah. Uh we are working with Hill Top to uh have some consulting to, uh so they can advise us on how to invest the the money and. So when you start doing that, they they usually want a resolution that's within a year of uh of when you start doing it, so. Uh the last time we did it was in twenty twenty-one, so I would like to update that so that we could be ready.
So it's just housekeeping?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to housekeep.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
And. Considerate, item thirteen, consideration and possible action to approve a new grant writer position for the Special Projects Department.
So this will be a position, a new position for uh that will work with closely with Anna, uh Hernandez's are are special projects. And they will be grant writing, so for one full year of of an employee at forty-three thousand, the uh the amount of base pay and benefits would be sixty-seven, seven thirty-five. But we are mid-year, so at this point, it it would approximate thirty-three thousand eight sixty-seven for this new employee to to assist in the grant writing process.
And you're looking for a newbie or someone who has experience in this?
We're hoping, we're we're always hoping for somebody that has experience to in in the grant writing process.
And that number is is an estimated number, um we always factor for the family coverage on health insurance. But sometimes they may just be the individual, so it'd be a lot less, so, but that's just in case we need to have a budget for that.
What's this person gonna be assigned to do and then before some people have, you know, transportation, those are the value with. Or is this just a free run or?
I think it, I I'm assuming it's gonna be a general.
It it would be whatever uh municipalities are allowed to apply for, uh there are some funds. Like the GLO right now has a program that's out for mortgage and homeowner uh assistance, but it's not for cities to apply for, it's just for. The actual homeowner, so obviously, they would be looking for projects and grant opportunities that. The cities would actually be able to apply for and in front, so it'd be a gamut of everything.
This brings us up to four then, right?
No, three, three.
P E has their own.
Um, well, they have.
He does do grant writing.
He 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 does, um but he does, I think, other things other than grant writing also.
Yeah.
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
But I, I will say that the, um, the PD does have their own, but I know Anna's, um, she, she worked on the grant that we got from uh, the earmark that we got from Representative Gonzalez and Anna did that and that was for, for the P, for the PD. And she, she really knocked that out really, really quick and did some amazing work, but she needs the support. Um, I would urge the commission to, to make this amendment so that way we can be doing our part and actively going after the money and, and ease the burden on our taxpayers. But with that, that we come up with a plan also for the grant writers and know exactly the ones that we have in-house, that we would have three at that point and, and also have some, some benchmarks, milestones, things that we want them to complete and authorize, uh, Gabe to, to come up with something to present to the commission in, in that regard as well.
Where's this person in your office?
We, we're still working on that, Commissioner. We don't have any space here.
We're running out of space.
Now, Anna did request that she would like to be with her grant writers, all of them. And so that will not be possible in this building. We don't have any space. Um, so, um, we might either do something at Lancy Hill, which is almost impossible at this point because of the staffing that they have over there or something at the ELC, but that's kind of far, but it would be the only other opportunity. And I don't want to rent any office space because that would just be additional expenses that we have to incur. So if we have the space available somewhere, I'd like to take advantage of that. And right now, it's looking like it might be at the ELC. Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, consideration and possible action to approve amendments to the purchasing policy for the city of Harlingen.
Okay, mayor, so, so this one kind of directly relates to, to the grant writing. So, uh, the federal regulations kind of require us to, to have some verbiage of, um, the two CFR two hundred, their, their regulation that, that governs uniform guidance and, and grants. And so, uh, in particular, two CFR part two hundred, three eighteen through three twenty-seven, uh, is the purchasing component of that regulation. So we, we are amending our purchasing policy to add chapter three to our policy to include that verbiage. So, so anytime that a, a grant goes, um, does expenditures, uh, uh, departments do expenditures that are grant related, they will have to follow this chapter three, uh, to be in compliance. And so one of the grant, uh, one of the granting agencies that we're applying for right now is, is the uh, federal granting that's being passed through the Texas, uh, uh, General Land Office. And so they don't preclude us from, from, from getting the grant, but it is, uh, a, a check, an item on their checklist that will help us get more points and, 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 and increase the possibility of getting those grants. So including this, this, uh, um, chapter three of the policy would help us get more points to, towards those grants. And so there, there were other, other little changes where we modified the wording to match chapter three in our regular policy, just to make it match. But, uh, the, the, really the, the major part that we are adding is chapter three on grants.
And it's, it's also not just adding points to our grants, but it's also putting into place the requirements that we expect employees to follow for, for grants and, and reporting procedures. So this also helped the city monitor that as well.
So there was no policy in place before?
Uh, not, not specifically related to that. Our, our policies, our local policies for the city are, are a lot more strict than, than these policies. Because these, some of the thresholds that are, are, are federal agencies are much higher than what we have. Like right now, we have three thousand is our bottom threshold and we have three thousand of fifty thousand and, and then we have fifty thousand and above. But their, their thresholds are much larger and they, they, they go like small purchases, micro purchases. And so they have different wording that they, they use in, in their thresholds and they're, they're much higher.
Mayor, we, we did have policies in place, but they weren't labeled as grant. I think the, the, the GLO called it a grant writing policy manual or something.
Yeah.
Uh, we just had purchasing policies in place. So we did have those in place. But, um, we're creating this, which covers some of our, some of our similar procedures, but just calling it the, the grant.
Right.
Writing component of it.
And so they sent us a template. We kind of just followed their template and we added the chapter three. And so, so now any expenditure that gets made out of, with federal funds has to follow this, this guideline.
Sounds good.
Yes, pretty much, yes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
I have a question if you don't mind. Um, you talked about the following procedures for expenditures. Do you have somebody right now in the house that can take care of that to a T? Or is this person that will be hired? Would this be part of their functions?
So, so we're not hiring a person? This is just a, an addendum?
But on the previous one, we'd hire a grant writer, right?
Oh, on the grant writer.
So are you going to have this particular person or maybe you're going to go with a somebody that can cover internships? So they can be properly trained to follow the procedure so we won't miss, so we won't miss uh, any type of, uh, deadlines when we're starting, when, when we get those grants.
So, so when we have, um, grant managers, like, so each department has their own person that manages a grant. So they, they're in charge of the deadlines and the submission of the expenditures. But, but, uh, in, in the policy, we did include in there that, that, uh, either Anna or myself, Anna Hernandez or myself would review them for, for, um, for, uh, compliance requirements.
Are directors or whoever is going to administer the grant, are they fully trained to, to follow those procedures?
They should. Whenever they apply for the grants, they, they are supposed to be familiar with the, uh, compliance, uh, requirements and the compliance supplements.
So they should be.
Yes. We've had, we've had training before for routine policies, but it, we can have those on a more frequent basis. Yeah, we can, we can. I mean, we always encourage, like in, in our department, we do have a, a person that oversees the grant, uh, uh, finance, the fiscal portion of the, of the grants and, and he does keep up to date and he does go to, to training and, and meets the training requirements and, but we can, like those, the, the directors that, that, um, that manage those grants should, should have that training and we can implement a, a policy, I think.
That they all go through the training and be kept up, get up to speed.
Yeah, I agree because it's, it's very important. You can lose funding, uh, when, when they don't follow the requirements.
Reviewing everybody's work constantly.
Right. Yeah. I agree. I agree with that. We will work on it.
That's it.
We had a second already?
No.
Yep.
No?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And can, item fifteen, consideration and possible action to accept or reject responses to RFQ number twenty twenty-three oh nine Hotel Occupancy Tax Analysis and Audit Services.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, so we did go out for, um, uh, RFQs for our hotel occupancy analysis and audit services. Um, so we, we did include a tabulation. We included, I included a sheet of all of the, um, firms that we, we approached to, to submit a, um, a, a bid. And then we have our bid tabulation on the next page, along with the evaluation forms.
Robert, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I think this is something I was just talking to, is this, if I understand this correctly, is this to audit the local hotel?
Hotel motel, yes.
Okay, is this something I mentioned to?
Yes, this is what I, uh, what I spoke to you about when we were in Austin.
Okay, so, um, I had just been talking to Gabe that I think that this is something that we needed to do. I didn't know when did this RFQ go out and how did we obtain these, um, folks, since it looks like we only got two responses?
Yeah, the deadline was, uh, February seventh, uh, for the response. I think we, we posted the, the proper notices and we contacted, uh, some of these, uh, firms.
You contacted them?
Well, we've, yeah, we mailed out the RFQs and then we posted on the newspaper.
So I don't see any local, uh, local folks. Well, there is in Hidalgo County. Is, so did we approach any of the people in Cameron or Hidalgo or i- is that proper? No?
You put out the RFQ, you can, but usually you don't. You let them do our paperwork.
Well.
You let them do the submissions.
Sure. So, but you said you, you, you reached out to a few.
Yeah, we did send them, send them out to these, uh, the listing that's, that's on there. And then we, and then we posted it. What, what they normally do is they just, uh, send them a copy of the RFQ. Yeah, they don't, they don't make contact.
Right. Well, that's what I meant. Like you, you not pick up the phone, but you reach out. Is there, so there's none, um?
I'm not aware of any, but I, I, I mean, I could look and I don't know that there's any in, in McAllen.
Okay, I'm just, I, I, is this something that I was looking into just because it's something that, um, that we're, that we've been collaborating on, working on?
Right.
Because I think it's an issue. Yes.
Say something and give, give it to the floor. So historically, we hired these firms every few years. And when it first came on board and we hired them, this is kind of paid everybody's honest. And it turns out that a lot of hotels in, in the city are not honest. And we still have somebody making payments.
Yes.
Yes.
We talked about that.
So some people come to you up, you know, within a year or immediately, then some it's been multiple, multiple, multiple years and paying for that taxes. So this is, this, it's a revenue source and whatever it costs to get the money, the return on investment is huge.
Again, we just, we just had. These are hot funds, so they only go to, uh, the hot accounts where they can only be used for certain things.
Right, right. That the return on investment is massive. And you want to expand on that a little bit?
Well, um, without naming names, I think that, uh, we've actually, the biggest, uh, uh, amount that was repaid was over a hundred thousand, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that we found.
That's the one that's a repayment. And then we just had a, a, a set of audits that they completed and they, there was another one where, where they paid seventy-five.
And so, um, and I'm not familiar, but whoever you used in the past that was able to, um,
Submit, yes.
unveil, reveal or, or do, do, do the audit and, and discover these discrepancies were?
Yes, they are included in this also. Yeah, there are one that's submitted.
When we go to TML, there's usually two or three of those of these companies.
Yes. I, I, I do, I, I agree, uh, wholeheartedly. I think that it's something that is in, that it's important. And this is a, uh, revenue source that we utilize in the city. And since there's, seems to be not really any, um, state oversight of the city, um, I think this is important. I'm just concerned that there was only two, um, companies that responded. But of these two, you have experience with those and you feel comfortable.
Yeah, we, we actually have experience with the both. They are both actual vendors right now with us.
Great.
What, what prompted, uh, this, uh, this request, this RFQs?
Their contract had been up and so I, I needed to renew it. So I was.
The contract with?
With, uh, the current, uh, uh, hotel motel tax auditors.
How often is that yearly?
No, I, I think it's, it's two, two, two years? I think like two or three years, but I think the last time we did it was in eighteen. So, yeah.
That long?
Mm-hmm. So then we, we, we went out for RFQs now.
And it's, and, and so this would be a contract for how long?
I, I'm assuming whatever we negotiated could be another two years.
But you did last in twenty eighteen?
Yes. Yeah, it was, it was done before I got here.
Okay. Sounds good. Does anybody else have any questions? Do we have a motion? Or, or, or what are you recommending that we?
We are recommending, so the one that, we're, we're just recommending the one that scored the highest, which is Avenue Analytics.
And you feel comfortable with that?
Yes, they are the ones that currently.
And they're out of Virginia.
I believe Georgia. Virginia or Georgia? It's Avenue Analytics.
Avenue Inside to Men.
Avenue Inside to Men. So their headquarters is in Centreville, Virginia? I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you.
Someone want to help?
The mic is having trouble with the mic. I'll, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, Avenue Analytics as our, uh, hotel occupancy tax, um, reviewer.
And second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Robert.
Thank you.
Um, board appointments. Does anyone have any board appointments? Start with.
This may might too.
Okay.
I have, uh, I have Andrew CC for Healthy Harlingen. And I have Adele Clinton Salise for planning and zoning.
For downtown improvement board, I'm reappointing Larry Keen and John Piercing for the EDC. I reappoint Javier Delgony for planning and zoning. I reappoint Marcus Perez for, uh, waterworks, I'll wait off, I think we have a couple of months before that, but all these guys passed the probation period.
Good job to those of you watching at home because it's difficult. Okay, um, and you, and you, did you get Commissioner, um, Kansas, yes?
Yeah, I'm going to appoint Jim Young to the golf advisory board and to the waterworks board. I'm going to, uh, appoint, uh, Maru de la Paz.
And I don't have it.
Maru.
And I'm going to add that I would like for the board appointments, Sergio, to be updated on the website, please. Um, what we have been given here from the ladies, it looks to be, um, updated as far as I can tell. Um, if, if you can work together, Amanda and Sergio, to ensure, I know we're going through this transition, but I do want the community to be able to look on there and see the, um, available appointments so that way we can appoint accordingly. And do we have a motion to approve those?
Motion.
Second.
All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Uh, before we move off this item, um, I went to a downtown improvement board meeting yesterday. This is the first time I've gotten one. It seemed like they had a lot of questions or misunderstandings or lack of understanding on the Texas Open Meetings Act. Uh, when I was on the community development advisory board, you were required every year to do one. Are the other boards required to do that?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
So downtown improvement board, every year they have to do it or every two years or whatever?
I, I don't know what the, what the number is, but they're required to take that and so I'll make sure that Josh gets it done matured.
I think they may need a refresher, uh, just so they understand, uh, agenda items, the breadth of it, all that. And Greg, you did fantastic job trying to explain them. You may want to give them that.
I just have to do that with the ACM for that apartment. Tell them, look, you're off Sunday, you can't talk.
And they have to file that form with us, sir. Once they go through the training, they have to file the form.
That's a good point, Commissioner.
So.
We may want to give them the copy card.
Okay.
Just write it up. Uh, a copy of the Texas AG's handbook on Open Meetings Act, uh, so they can have that to refer to, uh, in case they have any questions.
And, and something that I've been discussing with, um, Gabe and, and hopefully you can help us with this, Josh. I think that we need to implement some kind of orientation for our board members. Um, and there needs to be across the board for especially all boards that are, um, required to follow Toma. That needs to be part of their orientation. It needs to be done prior to them being, um, attending their, their, their first meeting so that they fully understand what's being asked of them. And then a communication between, as soon as the, uh, commission appoints these, that there is some communication to the chair of the board so that way they're, they, they, they are aware of, of their responsibilities. And, because we can't really blame the appointees if they're not given, given that information and they're volunteering their times. We want to make it easy for them. All right, um, anything else?
Yep.
Okay, so item seventeen, executive session on the following items. Item A pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven two regarding the purchase lease or value of real estate. If the deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city of Harlingen in negotiation with a third person regarding some of the following projects, the Texas Government Code, section five five one point oh eight seven regarding commercial and financial information from business prospects with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations and/or to discuss or deliberate financial or other incentives relating to the following projects from the, uh, EDC. One, Project Alphabet, two, Project Beach, and three, Project Laptop. Um, item seventeen B, consultation with city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven one two to receive legal opinion regarding a matter where the legal opinion is protected by the attorney client community, communication privilege. Item C pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four to deliberate the appointment and the duties of the assistant city managers. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It, time is now seven twenty-one. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to break for executive session and be back shortly. Thank you.
Commissioner Kinsler, you'll have to go to the second Zoom notice that was sent to you. Got it?
Nine oh seven and we are out of executive session. Nine oh seven and we are out of executive session. And now moving on to item eighteen, consideration and possible action regarding item seventeen A. One, two, and three is discussed in executive session.
Your motion to proceed is discussed?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so there is no action on item nineteen. And do we have an action item on twenty? Consideration and possible act, yes, action on item.
Yeah.
Seventeen C as discussed in executive session regarding the employment and the duties of the assistant city managers. Um, do we have a motion for that?
Motion. Er. Yeah, motion to proceed is discussed.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that uh, is our meeting. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening.